Board meeting in Brattleboro, Vermont. It's May 20th. Unfortunately, the Brattleboro Union High School was not able to provide a flag this morning, so we'll dispense with the pledge of allegiance. And as you all know, that does not disturb me too much at all. But I'd like to call on Ron Staley, the superintendent of Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union, for a few seconds, a few minutes.
I just want to thank you for coming down to Brattleboro. We really appreciate you coming here for the state board meeting. I take it you're sorry. We really appreciate you coming down to Brattleboro. I think it was a couple of falls ago, in October, you were here. Just appreciate the fact that you have the South on the radar. And we know Lachlan Francis is instrumental in coercing the group down here to the South. We really appreciate that. So, hope you have a great day, and we'll talk to you a little bit more later on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lachlan, you have a few things you'd like to say.
Yeah, so I suppose, welcome to Brattleboro Union High School. Glad most of all, most all of us could make it down here and find parking and find a room and all that. That's always a good start. So, yeah, it should be, you know, it's nice to have you guys at my soon-to-be alma mater, I suppose. We've got the purple and white tablecloths and everything. But, yeah, I think as I, you know, come to the end of my, my time on the state board and having, I guess, one more month, it's been, it's been a tremendous honor to work with all you guys. I feel like we've, we've accomplished a fair bit. And it's a lot, really, especially with EQS and all the other work that we're going on. And we've got more great stuff on the agenda today, especially around balanced accountability and standardized testing. So I'm looking forward to that. But, yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for, for the support you guys have helped me with in the last two years or so, and especially Stephen, for the rides and really becoming a role model over the last two years.
And driving, I mean.
Well, more than driving, but that too.
Well, as, as you know, we will be celebrating Lachlan's service at our next board meeting, but in that we're in his hometown, I feel compelled to say a few words. So, as you all know, Vermont has kind of led the nation with student participation in state boards of education. And I think over the years, at least in my tenure, we've been very honored to have some very dedicated, caring students. We've had several qualified students that have been appointed by various governors. But in my opinion, no student has distinguished himself more than, than Lachlan. Very ably represented the student positions during his tenure, but more importantly, had a very good perspective on broader educational policy. And as you all know, that for the first time, a student member rose to a leadership position on this board, and Lachlan was elected as co-chair to, and that is the first time a student has been in a leadership position. Lachlan, you've been a great state board of education member. We're going to miss you. And BUH should be proud to have fostered a great student and created a leader. And I'm confident that we will hear more of Lachlan in the future. So, I want to thank you for your service, Lachlan, and we'll have a lot more to say next month, but I wanted to make sure that you were acknowledged in, in front of your, within your institution here.
Thank you. Carol?
From a historical perspective, I just wanted to let you know that actually, the first student on the state board was from Brattleboro Union High School. His name was Isaac Evans Francis. And he, in 2000, was instrumental in getting the legislation passed. So, we are back with another outstanding student from Brattleboro.
You guys should always support people from Wyndham County. Every other year.
Well, it's, Carol, I think it's-
I'm working on it every other year.
I think it's unfortunate you brought that up, because Lachlan was not able to get our legislation passed this year. So, Lachlan, thank you very much. You've been a pleasure to work with. I look forward to my trips to Montpelier in the future, where I won't, won't land in town quite so exhausted after dealing with you for two hours. Let's go back to Ron Staley. You have a few things you would like to comment on?
Yeah, I, I had the good fortune of meeting Lachlan as an eighth grader when we did middle school leadership training. And Lachlan was one of our first students working on asset development. And what's evolved is, as he's become a high school student, he's worked with other high schoolers on one of our collegiate high school classes, a dual-credit class called Social Dimensions for Social Change. And what that does is, Lachlan and other high school students work with middle school and upper elementary school students on social competency and climate issues within the schools. And he has been an outstanding role model for the younger kids and for, for me. He, he has just been a great asset to this whole institution. So, we're, we're going to miss you, and we'll, we'll enjoy our last few weeks together.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, members of the public to be heard. Not seeing any. We will move on to announcements from board members. Any board members have an announcement they'd like to make?
Yes. In, earlier in May, on May 9th, there was the Fourteenth Annual Learning in Place Conference in Barnet, and Rebecca was able to attend and did a fabulous job of talking to the students. And we very much enjoyed having her at that conference. So, I'm going to pass around the information flyer, so you can see the event and her contribution to it. Thank you, Rebecca, for coming. Made a big difference.
Other members of the board, Bill?
I was only in the NSBE conference call for the Governmental Affairs Committee. And if you think that Montpelier might be a little bit crazy in terms of politics, think Washington, and you'll get a new perspective. I could summarize the call by saying, nothing is happening in front of an election. And the Ed Sciences Reform Act did pass with good bipartisan support, and that's good. Charter initiative passed the House, but did not pass the Senate in the last year. The budget is going to be slow and painful, and don't look for anything until after the election. The federal DOE is looking at some climate, school climate competition. I don't know if that's anything you're interested in or not.
Yes, very much.
Rebecca's not a yes. And something we should maybe talk about at some point is whether we, the latest developments on waivers and where that's going. We're not a waiver state. I'm not, not desiring to be one, to tell you the truth, but it's something we should keep an eye on. Sean Marie, what's Brad's last name?
Hall.
Hall. He did a workshop for us two years ago, and he's now left the NSBE. So, that's it.
Are there other board announcements? If not, I cut Ron off a little too short. So, Ron, you have a few other things you want to cover with us? I apologize.
I think I missed a sequence of things, but we just wanted to provide the board with a brief update on a couple of topics. One is the dual-credit initiative that we've been involved with. And then I think we'd like to just give you a brief overview of the personal learning plan work that we're involved with. Can you just take one and pass it along? Thank you.
Can I have this under the podium here?
Sure.
Brattleboro Union High School.
When we spoke to you last couple of years in October, we had probably been into our third year of developing the dual-credit program at, not only BUHS, but also the Wyndham Regional Career Center. And the thinking was to make it a regional program that our ascending school students would be able to participate in. And so, we started with about five courses. The next year, it grew to 10. I think the last time we spoke to the state board, it was probably around 25 to 30 classes. As you can see now, there's 41. There's actually 42, because we just had Chinese language, advanced Chinese language approved by SIT, so there'll be 42 courses. You can see the college partners. It's a wide range of institutions that we partner with, VTC, CCV, the local schools like Marlboro College, SIT, Landmark College, a lot of the New Hampshire Community College programs. New Hampshire's kind of unique, where their community colleges offer first-level college courses in every high school, at the high school. And, and that was a model that we, we kind of looked at when we were developing our, our coursework. We currently have 300 students enrolled in these courses. Our students receive between 15 and 30 credits, college credits, as they graduate from BUHS and the Career Center. If you look at the themes or the pathways, we've really tried to develop kind of a pathway approach. The first section, liberal studies, social justice. As I mentioned, Lachlan was involved with the Dimensions of Social Change, number eight on the list. That's been a really fantastic course, where high school students are essentially mentoring and teaching middle school and upper elementary school students asset development work, climate issues. When we set this course up, we tried to get high school kids out of class to do these workshops, and it wouldn't work, because principals like Steve Perrin had to deal with the teachers, saying, how come these kids are out of class? So then we decided to make a class, and it's, it's worked really well. You can see a business pathway, the STEM pathway. What's not on here yet will be the Performing Arts Pathway, which is a new set of courses that are being developed. And I won't go through this whole document, but on the second page, it really highlights our guiding principles, allows students to have a smoother transition to college, demonstrates college readiness, raises the motivation and aspirations in our students, reduces remediation in college. Any study that you see about students having to take remedial courses in college, math and, and writing, they pay the same amount, they don't get the credit. I think 40 to 50 percent of the kids that need to take remedial courses drop out of school. And so, we, we want to bypass that. Expanding school opportunities in the community. We have a lot of these courses linked with internships and partnerships within the community. And, and we have been steady with the idea of keeping a three-credit course $100. The voucher system last year with the flexible pathway has helped an awful lot. We know that's a two-year program. But even without that, we, we were committed to having the three-credit course for $100. So, over the course of five years, we've, we've needed to develop a budget locally within the BUHS budget. And our board has been very supportive, because they see the results. They see the number of kids that are taking these courses. So, we're using the money for tuition reduction and scholarship money. Because even at $100 for a three-credit course, which CCV would cost 650, UVM is $1,700, even at a low rate, some of the colleges and some of the courses require textbooks, and, you know, families aren't ready to spend 50 to $75 on a textbook, so we, we have scholarships available. So, it's been a really good, good program. The next couple pages are the list, list of about 66 colleges that have accepted credit. When we first started this, people said, well, that's great, but, you know, will the colleges accept the credit? We have about 25 more colleges to add to this list. But students are reporting, we track this, that their colleges, when they attend college, are either accepting it as elective credit, or if it's tied to their major, they will give them credit for their major. So, we've had really good results there. The other thing that I'm, I'm really proud about is the next couple pages. When we started with, with about 10 courses, we had 47 percent of our students were either first-generation, meaning they are the first students in their family to attend college, or low-income students, low SES. And this, this chart shows that the most recent last year tracking, 53 percent of our students are low, low-income or first-generation students. And that's the target population we're trying to hit. So, we're really proud of that. The last chart shows the demographics in terms of race and ethnicity. And our collegiate high school enrollments, students of color, is about 14 percent compared to our general population of 11 percent. So, again, we're, we're making opportunities for kids that, that will really, I think, impact their lives. So, we really do appreciate the legislation that went through with the flexible pathway. We are concerned that in our, in our region, neighboring high schools, although they can send their students to the Career Center, we know the challenges for small high schools, that they need to hang on to their student population. So, I think the concept of the flexible pathway was to allow all schools, all high schools to implement this. And I, I don't know if that's being tracked, but my sense is, that's not happening in a lot of high schools. And we would be very willing to, to offer workshops or a regional session on, you know, ways to encourage this program to happen. I think in my mind, it, it really takes leadership in terms of the principles, and you get a couple of teachers that understand the value of dual credit. We started with a math course and a, a writing course and a Career Center course. And we had teachers that were kind of thinking, well, what's this all about? We, we talked with them, we brought them to the college partners. They were very excited about it. And we started with five courses. And you can see, you know, people say, well, how many are you going to have? I don't know. But I, I think the important thing is, our standards follow the college course standards. We have to have teachers that are willing to adjust their curriculum to the essential objectives of the college, and that's worked really well. We just had a workshop for our collegiate high school teachers with a, the library media specialist from Marlboro College did a workshop on research and writing, which we had about 16 teachers involved with that. It was awesome. So, the connections with the colleges are really good. And, and the fact that our students are getting this benefit is very exciting to us. So, I'd entertain questions if you have.
Stacy?
I'm just very impressed with the numbers of the first-generation and the lower SES students who are involved. So, I was curious if you could talk a little bit about what, how you encourage those students to enroll, or what, what qualities enabled that sort of turnout to happen?
You know, I think we were very intentional when we, we looked at the courses that we were trying to create for the dual-credit. We didn't want to interfere with advanced placement courses. We have a number of those. We didn't want to interfere with some of the higher-level courses that, that, you know, kids are going to naturally take, that are going to go on to four-year colleges. But we looked at the number of courses that students kind of in the middle of the road would experience, would, would maybe take, and, and with encouragement, think about, you know, this would be a good thing to pursue. So, I think it was interest-based, and also thinking about these gateway courses, like a writing course and a math, a basic math course, a college-level basic math course. And I think the fact that we have Career Center attached to the high school was a really great help. And then I think it's the encouragement of the teachers. I, I think a big element to the success of this is, these classes are taught in the schools, by their own teachers. They're essentially adjunct professors, if you will, for the colleges. And, and they have the people that they know that can encourage them and help them be successful. It's not to say that, we do have a couple of courses where we send students to CCV or other schools. Landmark is a new partnership. And, and those teachers are great, but, but they don't have the same relationship with, with the students that, that their high school teachers have. So, I don't know. I mean, there's, it's, it's pretty, pretty complex, but there's, I think there's some key things in terms of our own teachers and the philosophy that we, we promote with this, that, that I guess we start to realize, it's going to impact those kids.
I felt the same way.
I think the other, the other help-
The record, would you introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Steve Perrin, principal of a high school. Hi. No relation, but, well, maybe back in the day-
Is it spelled the same way?
It is.
Because that's not too usual.
There you go.
Let's, let's move on.
Okay. So, our school council has been a big part of this as well. And, you know, they've recognized kids from low SES and, and kids that are eager to improve themselves and eager to move on after high school. And they've done a great job of targeting students and having that conversation. We have a summer school program now that focuses on college and career readiness. And so, we're hoping that those students, you know, we visit colleges during the summer, and we're hoping that that continues to help the program build as well.
The Paul Tough and the New York Times Magazine on Sunday had a great story about why, why primarily, why white students will often finish college and primary students of color or low SES drop out. And one of the main points was that those students will arrive in college and quickly get the message that they don't belong, because they've been funneled into a remedial writing course, a remedial math. And so, it sounds like you really have hit it on something, where within this, this school where they're already known and feel comfortable, where they're identified as students with potential, not students who have failed. I'm wondering if you have any sense of how those students have done, since you've taken these classes, moving forward?
They, they report to us. And again, our counselors track this, and that's where we get the list of colleges that our students report that they've earned credit and transferred their credit. You know, I guess it's too soon to think about, you know, five years, three years ago, you know, what the students have done. But anecdotally, we hear really great things when our counselors check in with the students. We're getting to a point where we're going to be seeing students graduate from college and report to us. And I think at that point, we're going to have, host some panel discussions with those students to talk to younger students. We're already, and, and we'll talk about this a little bit with the personal learning plan, if we have time. VSAC has been a great partner with us and has been really helpful at the middle school level to think about career and college readiness. So, yeah, I mean, that, that whole concept of getting kids thinking, I can do this work, has been a key, so.
That's great, thank you.
One of the, I mean, we all know that finally, the dual enrollment program is a, is a statewide program, but I think where Brattleboro has distinguished itself is that, by and large, 99 percent of the classes are held here on the campus, and as you say, mostly with, with your own teaching staff. And as, as some of us know, there's a major thing happening later this year, I guess, with an expansion of CCV and VTC in, in Brattleboro. How does this, how is this program going to fit in? Will this change that program at all, or?
I don't think so. It can enhance it. I mean, I, I would hope that the students will have opportunities, I mean, as they do now with CCV, it's pretty close to our campus, but right downtown Brattleboro will be even closer. So, we would hope that there'll be a really good exchange between VTC and CCV and our students and teachers. So, I, I think it can only help. You know, what's interesting is, like, with Landmark and Marlboro College, where they've been great partners, and SIT, but SIT is more of a graduate school program, but with Marlboro and Landmark, so they have partnered with us, with our college, with our teachers here on, on campus, but they're offering courses the next semester on their campus. And, and they're providing a bus for our students, they're, they're designing their course time tied to the high school schedule, you know, so they're really being flexible. And that's going to get kids on a college campus, because we want that to happen as well.
Great. Margaret?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the summer school, college and career readiness? How long that's been going, what the, what the rate, you know, how long it takes, what you do, and how it's funded?
Yeah, sure. Let me talk about the career and college readiness course. That's a, that's a Career Center class, which we've expanded. It was kind of like a remedial support course, but what's happened with this program is, certain classes require the Accurplacer assessment to be taken, and some kids are missing the standards for, to, to meet those cutoff scores. And so, we redesigned that program to help students in that class get basic skills, you know, related to reading and writing and math. So, that's been expanded during the school day. And so, again, it's our own staff, it was a program that was funded anyway, and now it has a different focus. And we actually want to expand that more to the high school. The summer school is something that Steve and the Chris and the director really initiated. And I'll let Steve speak about that.
So, we piloted, piloted it last year, and it's targeted at students who are entering ninth grade. And it's also targeted at students who are struggling in ninth grade. And so, we have that two-year cohort that we're working with, because we recognize if students leave school, that decision's often made in middle school or earlier. And so, we're trying to reverse that decision. It's a five-week program. During the program, they, you know, last year, they did some robotics, they did some math, they did some English. And it runs from 8:30 to 1:30. We provide breakfast and lunch through our summer foods programs. And during the weeks, we visit local businesses to kind of see what, what offerings are here for students who want to graduate from high school and enter the workforce. You know, we've gone to GS Precision, we went to the hospital, we went to ROV Technologies, which actually does nuclear power plant outages, and that was an amazing visit. And then we also visit colleges. We went to CCV, we went to UMass, went to Keene State. And we tried to get a range. We wanted to get a community college, we wanted to get a big university, and we wanted to get a state, a state school. And Keene's the closest one, and so we went there. It involves a tour. At UMass, we had lunch with the football team, and that was totally unplanned, but the kids were thrilled. And so, we usually try to see if we can get somebody who's there in a summer program, whether it's athletics or an academic program, to come and visit. Keene has a brand-new design center, and with 3D printers and machining shops, and so we spent a day there. And so, the kids, you know, they literally walk on the campus and say, I could never imagine myself here. And then at the end of the day, on every trip, one student would say, I'm, I'm going to come here to college, whether it was UMass or CCV or Southern Vermont College. This year, we're hoping to do an overnight, and that's either going to be to Randolph, and from, from there, we'll go to VTC and then go north, or UVM, and, you know, stay overnight in Burlington and kind of explore those colleges. It's been a remarkable program, and, you know, we're excited to see it get bigger this year.
So, how it's funded is, you know, as I said, the, the career and college readiness course is within our program. I think the initial summer school was funded through some grants and monies that we had some flexibility through the Perkins Grant with our Career Center. And then this, this year, it's, I think 10,000 was locally funded at BUHS and 10,000 in the Career Center.
Okay.
And again, we have some other grant money to supplement it, because these foundations understand the benefit of, you know, this type of early exploration for, for young students.
Yeah. And you're probably tracking the impact of this, too, on kids' decisions later on, when you get there, right?
Right. Well, and not only that, we're also tracking, you know, for the, especially for those struggling ninth graders, how are they doing this year?
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm happy, none of them have dropped out of school. They're all remaining in school. First semester, you know, we had first semester data, they passed every one of their classes. And so, you know, we're seeing a change, and we're seeing a definite shift in how they look at school.
Yeah.
Which is great to see.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, my question was on the budget line item for the dual enrollment. What is that? Does anybody know off the top of their head?
Yeah, it's $60,000. We, we started with, at that time, it was the Department of Ed Innovation Grants. I think we had three years of grant funding at about, I don't know, I think the total was 70,000 spread over three years. John Fisher was very instrumental in helping us acquire that. Armando was very supportive. And so, that helped us with the first three years. And then I think locally, we just added like $10,000 initially, and then just incrementally increased it based on the fact that we have so many students taking it, the need for tuition reduction and scholarship. And again, I think the board has, has really seen the benefits. So, it's, it's, you know, out of a, what's our budget? It's a big budget. It's a big budget. You know, $60,000 is a small, small percentage of a comprehensive budget, which includes the Career Center, high school and middle school.
Rebecca?
I just had two questions, and well, really, one is just an encouragement. It's really exciting to see the focus-
It's really exciting to see the focus that you've had on encouraging first-generation kids and kids who are living in poverty to continue to go to college. We know that pretty consistently, 25 or 30% of our kids go on to college anyway, and so the real challenge is moving deeper into the distribution, encouraging the kids who might not have gone to go there, so I hope you'll track this data really carefully moving forward, because what will be powerful to see is not only that they take these courses here, but they're actually going on and succeeding in post-secondary education, one way, shape, or form, and I think that's when we'll know Act 77 is successful, when we have that kind of data, so I'm thrilled to see this and hope you track it. And you've all have spoken to another challenge, which is this issue of forming a college-going identity and helping students, all students, understand that they actually are college-going students, or could be college-going students, and nationally, the literature on college courses offered on high school campuses taught by high school teachers is pretty mixed, and it doesn't seem to have the same effect as college courses taken on college campuses by college professors, in that it doesn't seem to generate the same sort of turnout at the college level, and I just wondered, you know, you're clearly doing some work here to help students, even the ones enrolled in your, in your program here, develop that college-going identity, and I just wondered, how do you help students understand that a college course offered here by a high school teacher is really a college course? I mean, how have you framed that, so students understand the difference?
Yeah, I think through orientations with the students, I think other students talking to students, I think students that have gone to college and received the credit, coming back and talking with students, just word of mouth, I think that's had a huge impact on the number of students that have decided to take courses. We have, I'll remember, like, four or five, no, about four years ago, we did an orientation after the students had signed up, I think half the kids didn't realize they were signed up for college-level courses, and some of them, you know, there were a couple courses where you had an option to take the college credit or not, and kids realized pretty quickly that, you know, you're doing the same work. The teachers at our school were saying, "This is the level of work that you need to do," and, you know, you might have one less paper, or a few other assignments that you didn't have to do, but the kids at, in the middle of the course, at the end, said, you know, "I wish I had done it for college credit, because I could have done that work," and it wasn't easy work, but it was work supported by teachers saying, "These are ways that you can accomplish this." So I think things like that, word of mouth, people talking to other students, students coming back saying, "Yeah, I got six credits, and I got into a school because I had nine credits that the college was very impressed with the fact that I had been able to do this work," so I agree with you, we still need to track further down into this in terms of when, when kids are completing college to get a real sense of the impact.
And just one last thought, I would encourage you to continue, I mean, one of the things I heard from a community college recently is they wanted to add remedial courses to their list of college-level offerings, and to me, that's not what this is about. If you need a remedial course at the college level, you should still be in your high school program, because that's where you prepare yourself to develop the skills you need for college, so I really appreciate your saying that that hasn't been your focus, and I encourage you to really hold that bar, otherwise, it really demeans the whole purpose of this initiative, so I want to commend you on that, and encourage you to hold those standards.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments, Sean Marie?
I have a few questions in terms of, it's somewhat similar to what Rebecca was asking, but in terms of, I'm assuming on your first-page list, the WRCC is your local career center?
Yes.
So, is there anything that the teachers that are teaching these classes do differently than other teachers in terms of offering a college-level course?
They work with their college partners, and usually, there's a instructor assigned to be kind of a mentor with our own teachers, to work on changing our curriculum to meet the essential objectives of the college.
Who might a partner be?
Oh, well, as you look at the list of colleges, so VTC, there'll be a math teacher from VTC that will work with our teacher doing math instruction, Marlboro College, there'll be an English teacher that's working with our English teacher.
So are they recognized by Marlboro and whatever these other-
Hidden schools, yeah, as adjunct instructors, they have to meet their requirements.
So if you looked at their syllabus, or you looked at their website, you'd see a Brattleboro teacher listed as somebody teaching a course at the high school?
I don't know that, I don't know if that's in their program of studies, I do know that we, our teachers have to fulfill their requirements that an adjunct instructor would have, and then, as I said, kind of modify their curriculum to meet the college standards.
So in terms of your internal scheduling, their schedule, anyone teaching these courses, would it would mirror another teacher's schedule?
Yes, yep.
And then, have you seen a drop in your AP classes in terms of enrollment?
No.
No?
And we have a pretty robust list of AP, and number of AP courses, and we don't see that they're competing against each other.
You know, we offer statistics as our collegiate high school offering, and we offer AP calculus, and we're really pleased to see enrollment, both of those courses continue to rise.
And what is, what is the outcome of your, do all your students who take APs, are they required or expected to take the AP test?
They're expected to take the exam, and the results are mixed, I mean, some students do really well, and some don't do as well.
I think we try to be really intentional when we introduce new courses to this program that will not compete with other courses, I mean, there's some cases you can't avoid it, but we've learned, like, one of the English comp courses, maybe it shouldn't have been a collegiate high school course this year, and so we'll probably back, back off that, because, you know, the idea of, you know, you can raise the standards, but if kids are not meeting that, then we're really not providing a basic high school course that these students need, so, you know, we tweak this.
And are they open to any ninth through 12th grader?
It's generally juniors and seniors, but we have had sophomores taken, I don't know that we've had any freshmen, but I think, I know we've had some sophomores and do really well.
Good, thank you. How do the demographics of your AP offerings compare to the demographics of the students taking the college?
I don't know exactly, but I would say that the AP offerings are fewer first-generation students, that, you know, AP has a certain reputation and a certain, you know, cachet to it, and so people that go to AP courses are generally encouraged to go there, because their parents have gone to college, so.
How do you manage that internally, in terms of your college conversations?
Counselors have that conversation with kids, and they talk about the value of AP, and they also talk about the value of the collegiate high school courses. You know, with AP, you may or may not get college credit, depending on, you know, how you do in the exam, and, you know, all of that, whereas if you successfully complete the collegiate course, you're going to get that credit, and that's a-
Not, not every college recognizes the credit, though.
Right, that's true, right.
Although it's impressive, the number of colleges on this list that do recognize it.
That do, right.
Any other questions on this subject? I just want to make note of, Ron, something you said that I'm concerned about is that, and this was a comment you made about the career center, that not all local regional high schools are fully supportive, I'm not quoting you now, but-
Yeah, thanks.
Are not fully supporting career centers, because, as we know, that, you know, it's tuition-driven, that a local high school wants to make sure that student is staying as much as possible at that high school and not jeopardizing tuition by coming to the career center. I think that's a flaw in our system.
And we've talked a lot with John Fisher, and he's very supportive, we would consider being a pilot, that we change the ratio and get, leave more of the money in the sending school, because we, you know, I was a former high school principal, Leland and Gray up the road, small high school-
I know, and well, as a graduate.
Yes, yes, good. Glad I didn't have to track, never mind.
That would have been easy.
Yeah, so I understand that, you know, when they used to be able to send 25, 30 students with a higher enrollment, now 15 to 20 is a challenge for them, and I would be willing, we have been willing to say, "Let's change the ratio of the numbers, keep more of the money in their district." The numbers of students that come to us, it's a benefit, but it's not about, I don't think for us in our district, it's not about, well, if we get these numbers of students, it's going to build our budget, it's not about that, it's about opportunities for kids, and I think that's where that legislation, the, the school governance legislation, I mean, it's all about options for kids, it's not about, you know, superintendents or anything like that, so, you know, we'll be working with John Fisher to try to see if we can come up with some-
I would encourage that, because it's, I mean, obviously, you run a great program here, and if students in the, in the area can't take full advantage of it, it's really, in my mind, contrary to the philosophy of creating the career center. Did you have another subject you wanted?
Well, we were just going to touch briefly on the personal learning plans.
Please.
Steve has led a work group that is starting to look at this and come up with some really exciting options. We also have a regional counselors group that has just started to meet again to think about what all of the other high schools are doing, so we can learn from each other, so Steve has a little-
Sure, so, you know, we've spent some time for years looking at students that have 504 plans or IEP plans, or some EST plan, and we've thought to ourselves, wouldn't it make sense that every student has a plan? And so, you know, we're kind of glad to see Act 77, which kind of says that every student gets a plan, which is a great step. So, you know, as that legislation passed, we looked at that, and we thought about, you know, we know we have two years to begin that, but we want to start next year with ninth graders, and so we're going to jump in and have our ninth graders start next year with PLPs. During that year, we're going to pilot our template with our ninth graders, we're going to, we're also, at the same time, going to see if we can put that completely online, so we don't have to track all that paper again, and part of the mission for this summer and next fall is to kind of build the public awareness and build the public will, and to really look at educating our school board, look at educating our parents about why we want to do a PLP, and what the benefit is. We've had some great assistance, because the agency sponsored grants to support the development of those plans, and we're the recipient of one of those grants, and so we've used that to form a K-12 group that's looking at, how are we going to handle grade seven through 12 students with personal learning plans? So we want to start, when a student comes from, whether it's Dummerston, Putney, or Bams, or Middle School, that they can come in, and we can look at that plan, and have the plan have a lot in common. We know the language has to change as the students' developmental needs change, but we also want to make sure that we're kind of having a plan that's consistent when they come up. So we're committed, as a district, to have a common template, we want to have a 712 template, we've had a lot of experience having student information systems that don't match, and so we want to make sure this matches, just to help ourselves. We know we want it to be online, VSAC has been doing some great work developing their own template, where we're struggling a little bit is, we want to move eventually to a proficiency-based graduation model, and a lot of the templates we see require English, social studies, math to be checked off and recorded, we actually want to do it where we're going to develop the proficiencies that a student needs to leave high school, and we want to have our plan go in that direction, which, on the surface, seems simple, but it's a pretty big undertaking, because we'll have to go through all of our courses and say, where do each course meet a proficiency, and how does a student document that? So, you know, that, I think, is going to take a three-to-five-year rollout to really get that system fully functional, but that's kind of where we're looking to go. You know, as part of our accreditation process, we developed learning expectations for all kids that we follow now, PLP is going to actually help us move that process along and make explicit connections between those expectations, our core values, and what students need to do to graduate. So we're hoping, in the future, that's where we're going to head, but for this fall, we're looking at ninth graders, we're hoping that some of our seventh-grade partners will also pilot with their seventh graders, so we can get a sense of where this is going to go. And the regional counselors meeting has helped a great deal, because, you know, again, going back to the career center, if they, if all of our schools have a similar template, that's going to make things easier for our career center as well, so.
Rob, terrific, that, that whole philosophy has a lot of support on this board, as well as the agency, and, so, please keep us up to date.
Sure.
Any questions on that?
Can I just take 30 seconds?
Sure.
I also want to applaud the agency for their work on the balanced accountability model, Chris Case came down early this month, and met with our leadership team and about 10 other people from outside districts, and it was really exciting to see the philosophy of getting away from just standardized tests, and I know, you know, I value being in Vermont, because we're not like a lot of states that are just driven by the test, and I know it's a big challenge, I know the issue of capacity is going to be a big issue, but I really applaud Rebecca and the agency and the support of the state board for this balanced model, so really encourage us to keep thinking that way, appreciate it.
If we could only change the federal legislation.
Well, we can show a model that works.
Margaret?
It's about the proficiency model.
Sure.
You're doing that work independently here, and going through that, there are other schools in Vermont also doing that work, do you see the potential for a network and all, how, what help could the state give in that effort? I know in New Hampshire, for example, it's a requirement that schools move to competency-based, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm wondering if there's network potential for-
One of the, one of the great things has been the League of Innovative Schools and the Great Schools Partnership.
Yep.
That's been an incredible asset, because we've been able to communicate with schools from Maine, Rhode Island, we're going to actually go visit a school in Danvers, it's a small, it's a small magnet school, to kind of look and see what they're doing for proficiency-based models, so, supporting that, the league initiatives would help a lot.
Okay.
To be honest, we use that grant money every year to send people to visit schools, and that's a huge help to us as well.
Okay, thanks.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. Are there any other announcements from board members? A very brief report in behalf of the chair, through a mutual friend, I recently had a great phone conversation with the chair of the Massachusetts State Board of Education, a woman by the name of Mara Banta, who works for IBM and actually has some connection to Vermont with the IBM plant in Vermont, and I look, she was very encouraging that maybe there were things that Vermont and Massachusetts, as contrary as it might seem, could do together, and so I just want to alert you on that. The only other part of my report is to tell you that I spent a fair amount of time in Montpelier in the last month, month and a half, obviously without a lot of success, but I'll save those particular comments until we get to the legislative update, so. Moving on, yes?
I did actually, the last standards board meeting, which also meets again this week, there was a lot of discussion on clarifying what, what issues were going to take place in the licensing process, and it is a process, and they're very grateful to the agency for their input and their guidance on that, so it's, I would say it's a bit of a work in progress, but they plan to vote on some changes this week, so.
Moving on to committee reports, I would suggest we save the legislative committee report, Bill, until we get to that, the legislative update.
That was going to be my suggestion as well.
You all know that there's something wrong with this meeting, Bill and I are in full agreement.
It isn't over yet.
For five seconds. Right. And I suspect the SU Governance Committee has nothing they'd like-
Full agreement.
Okay? Is there a member, I noticed that Bonnie is not here, but is there a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, has that committee met in the last month?
No.
Moving on to the secretary's report.
All right. I'm going to leave anything referring to the balanced accountability model till the end, because we're coming back to that later, and I'm going to apologize, I feel like I'm under assault by every birch tree in the state of Vermont, so I'm very congested. I just wanted to pick up, first of all, by talking about the personalized learning plans, because those came up here, so I'll speak to that first. We're very excited the agency to be partnering with VSAC to support a platform, Naviance Platform, that will be a statewide platform available to all schools in the state for a dollar a head, so it's a, you know, if you've got 25 seniors, or 25 kids, you've got $25 fee to use this platform, and it's a tool that we selected after analyzing all the career and college planning tools that were available in the market and being used currently in Vermont, it's the one that's most widely used in Vermont, but it, we're in transition, it isn't being supported the way it was, and we're actually moving towards a model that was modified to support the PLP process, and it's, it's been, it was chosen for its functionality, it's user-friendly counselor tools, it's easy for counselors to use it to provide both college and career counseling, but also to build in the personalized learning components, and it's pervasively used, so scaling it out to the remaining schools is going to be relatively simple, it's not disruptive, and it just extends a widely-used resource to the few schools, particularly the really small schools, that haven't been able to take advantage of it, because it's available now at a much lower subsidized price. because it's available now at a much lower subsidized price. Schools that are already using Naviance will be able to renegotiate on the new terms so that most schools will see a substantial reduction in cost for that work. So, we're very excited about that and we expect that to be available as a resource. Obviously, no one has to use it, but given the experience of schools that are using it, including, I think, yours.
Yes.
It's a useful tool. And the schools that do use it will benefit from the work of groups that were in the PLP planning process and have already begun to experiment. So, it's been test-driven and modified in response to use, so that's very exciting. Another piece coming out of the legislative session, and I know Jill will speak to this later as well, but I wanted to just call it out because it's particularly exciting to us, is that one of the things that we've been grappling with at the agency is how to, how to deal, how to support multi-tiered systems of support and more inclusive learning environments for all students with disabilities and also ensure that we're meeting sort of the stringent guidelines for approved uses of special education funding. And one of the paradoxes of more inclusive approaches to educating kids with disabilities is that if you're successful, you will actually have less hands-on time by your special education staff with students. So, when you talk, think about the kinds of time studies that special educators are required to do to justify reimbursement. The paradox is that when they're successful, they actually can't demonstrate the reimbursement, the need for reimbursement. On the other hand, schools can't take the risk to move to those more inclusive environments if they don't have what might appear to be excess staffing. So, we are concerned with what we see as a pattern where the way we reimburse may inadvertently in some cases be driving schools towards special education practice that we feel is both very costly and very bad for children. It's, I think the most obvious manifestation of this is heavy reliance on paraprofessionals who, though they're wonderful, are not trained teachers and effectively become a person between the child who most needs high-skilled teaching and the actual person who's trained to deliver it. So, in response to that, we asked the legislature to approve a modified special education block grant, which raises the threshold for the basic block grant in schools that apply to us and are intending to use a whole-school intervention that supports more inclusive environments and multi-tiered systems and also focuses on social-emotional learning and developing social-emotional capacity. And in this case, we're targeting the SWIFT schools. There's four districts and 12 schools, I think, that are piloting the SWIFT model. I think you've heard about this in another meeting. And they will apply to be eligible for this modified special ed block grant. And as part of that planning process and application process, they're going to demonstrate how they're going to reduce their reliance on things like the one-on-one paraprofessionals for special education and replace it with a more inclusive model. Because, because the block grant will be increased for those schools, they won't have to do the exhaustive time studies. So, that will give them some freedom for that work. We're conducting it in a pilot level, first of all, because we realize that there's potential for risk in any intervention, so we're treating this as an experiment. And if it's successful and we monitor its results and we see, begin to see outcomes, we'll be able to make a recommendation to the legislature that they consider extending this opportunity to other programs. We're targeting SWIFT because SWIFT, like PBIS, has demonstrated results. It works empirically in that it's when schools have embraced it as a whole-school intervention and have implemented with fidelity. What we're seeing is much lower referrals to special ed, lower referrals to discipline as well. So, we're trying to find ways to increase flexibility to support what we think of as evidence-based practice. And we're just, we're just very excited about that. We've also been working with Michael G. and Greco, I don't know if anyone knows, he's the, and he's been invaluable in helping us think about what some of those interventions might be. I will give you one heads up in terms of assessment. We had a meeting in Minneapolis this month with the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium to talk about the standard-setting process and we're going to come back to it this afternoon, so I won't belabor that piece. But one of the things that we have been pushing, and I have been pushing on very aggressively since January, is asking Smarter Balance to prepare a white paper on what they see as appropriate and inappropriate uses of testing. And I'm thrilled to report that they've come a very long way from January when they said that they couldn't, and Arnie Duncan said he couldn't, because, you know, so we were caught in this catch-22. Smarter Balance has now had a discussion with their technical advisory committee and they're moving forward on a proposal for a white paper. Two of the professors, academics who will be on it are Linda Darling-Hammon and Ed Hartele, I think is, they're not confirmed yet, but it's one of the people they've requested. That gives you a little sense of the group, the direction it will take. It is going to particularly focus on the uses of testing as something separate. And that speaks to the policy world in terms of what some of the mandated uses are for testing. But I see this as a huge step forward and I think when you know the research of some of those individuals, it gives you a sense of where we are. These conferences have been incredibly helpful for us as a state. I mean, our joke in the agency is that we're the flea on the tail of the dog. We have so few students, we're smaller than districts in many states, despite the fact we have more districts in just about every state. But it's, it's been incredibly useful to network there and in particular, we have been forming some pretty strong partnerships with California. And if you've been reading Linda Darling-Hammon's recent work, you know, writing in, she's on leave and it's not academic, but in the public, public press, you've probably heard her referring to something, referring to something that sounds very similar to our education quality reviews. And we are working intentionally to foster that movement in parallel. And I think increasingly, we're the gadfly and they're the, you know, the gravitas at the table, they're the goliath in the room. Any accountability process that comes out of a new reauthorization process is going to have to acknowledge California. And California is now proudly and adamantly one of the non-waiver states and is really focused on multiple measures and shifting from the ranking and sorting to a focus on continuous growth and learning. And I think that is going to leave us in a much, much better position when it comes to reauthorization, whenever that comes. On the less positive note, the U.S. Department of Education did send out a letter last week talking about the waiver process because as you've been following in the press, some states are being forced to give up because they aren't able to deliver on the use of test scores for teacher-value-added models for a whole bunch of reasons. Most, you know, certainly in cases where legislatures have taken votes against them, but also just unable to move through or having concerns about implementation. So far, there are a couple delayed responses by USDWE to states that both sought waivers and received race-to-the-top funding. And the million-dollar question is, when a race-to-the-top state that received extensive funding for implementation of teacher-value-added models says they can't do it, will they be compelled to return the money? We don't know and that hasn't happened yet. And the delay in responding to places where that seems to be happening is making us wonder if their goal is to wait till after the midterm elections. So, we don't, we don't know. But I think what is clear is that the system is broken and I think that at some point it's going to collapse. What we see is that there are increasing states that are having trouble delivering on this for many of the reasons that you'll talk. When I did, I did follow up to that letter because USDWE said that they were looking at flexibility around the waivers and I thought that I would go back and see if flexibility included removing the requirement that we evaluate and sanction principals and teachers based on their students' test scores, and it does not. So, they're still keeping that. And when I asked them, I asked her point-blank, "So, what you're saying is we need to do something that you're agreeing is statistically indefensible?" She said, "Yes." So, they know it's not defensible, but they're also going to say that we have to do it if we want to have access to the federal resources. I just want you to know, nothing has changed on that front to support children and improve their own professional practice as colleagues, sort of what I would call professional accountability rather than test-based accountability. And I'm sure we'll come back to these issues in the context of the discussion later. But, you know, we, it pretty much sums up where we are.
Bill is smiling.
What's that?
Bill is smiling.
Well, it's.
It's predictable. I mean, I think if you, if you talk to any teacher, I think they could tell you how the students would score before they took the test. And I think most teachers would have told you in 2001 that this is the situation we would be in in 2014. And the question is, when will we have the will, the political public will, to actually develop a system that instead of ranking and sorting helps people actually do the work they intend to do and is a little bit more respectful? And I think if high-stakes accountability worked, we would see, you know, enormous astronomical gains across the state. The whole presumption is that teachers just weren't trying and so now we're going to punish them so that they try. And that clearly hasn't worked because we haven't seen the improvements in any of the places that it's taken place. And I think the reality is what professionals need is good data they can use to improve practice and that's, that's where we need to move as a state. Two other, a couple other pieces, we have the.
Stephen, can I ask a question on the special ed? Is that okay?
Yeah.
So, on the special ed in the, in the block grants and the non-time sample districts, is that, even though the legislation passed something, is that, is that going to get those districts out of the feds' requirement to pass the money through?
No, it's mostly, it's, what it's not, first of all, there's still, one of the reasons we have the reimbursement system in the first place is because we have very many small schools and it's sort of an insurance system for small schools because if you have one student with multiple intense needs that moves into a district, it could be, you know, a huge expense added on a small budget. And so, it's, it's a way to insulate small schools from that kind of variability and cost. What we're doing with the, this will still be fine with the federal government and what it's doing is just increasing the basic block grant allocation, which is sort of considered the cost of doing special ed as opposed to the, there will still be reimbursement.
So, the time samples weren't really tied to that in essence?
It just, there's, we give, already give a basic block grant, which is the cost of doing special education services and that, and for that grant, you don't have to document the time on services. Over and beyond that, we will continue to have reimbursement model because even in these, these 12 schools, some of them are small, they may still have somebody move in with a very complex set of needs that require, you know, intensive investments of resources and we still want to protect them in the event of that so that those children receive necessary services.
Thank you.
What we're doing is just lifting the ceiling a bit so they have a little more flexibility to provide support pushed into the classroom and do the multi-tiered, sort of more inclusive models.
Thank you.
We, another thing the legislature passed was some resources in a position to support expansion of common chart of accounts for the state of Vermont. Right now, and I think you've heard this at several meetings, but I wanted you to know that they did support this. The development work of the common chart, common chart of accounts is mostly done. We need to finish a handbook and provide some support for implementation across the state and that's where those resources will go. This won't solve the challenges of comparability because those will always be occluded by issues of governance structure and make it difficult to make comparisons. But we're, it's a baby step towards comparability so that, you know, within certain controlled parameters, we will be able to help districts get a better sense of what the return is they're getting because we'll have more clarity about where resources are going. And that's, that's a huge, huge step forward. It's hard, it's hard on a board to evaluate whether you're investing in the right things if you can't figure out what you're getting for it. I also wanted to say that we have now in place a public safety position that we're sharing with the Department of Public Safety. And this is a person who is halftime there, halftime in our office. We should have a website up to illustrate the role he's playing in the, in the education domain. And we're absolutely thrilled to have him working at the state level to coordinate with individual districts and identify best practice in terms of safety planning and ensuring that every school has a, a plan to, around communications and strategies for keeping children safe in their schools. Wish we didn't have to have this, we do. And I was at a state training recently and the scenario began with it's eight o'clock in the morning and there's a bomb threat. And the solution was that only one person would control communications at the school. You know, I just looked at myself and I said, "You need a different plan." And that's what, that's what Rob is going to do. He's going to help schools think through the logistics of how you mitigate, how you anticipate to reduce the probability of incidents and then how you mitigate so that in the terrible and unfortunate and hopefully never-seen case that there is a bad incident, that at least you approach it strategically as a district in a way that minimizes the damage and the disruption to students and keeps them safe. So, we're absolutely thrilled about that. Related to that, our legal team is now working with the legal team of the VSA and Visbet to review our hazing and harassment and bullying procedures and protocols because we have been made aware that they're written differently, the two different policies, one for bullying, one for harassment, and that may actually cause problems for districts and make it difficult for districts to approach incidents in a coherent way. So, we're working with that and then we will bring that back to a focus group, hopefully with the help of Tracy Sugawa, to get feedback and continue to do that work. And it's just another example of how different individuals in the agency are also trying to work with different stakeholders to capitalize really on the extensive know-how. Visbet's interesting because it sees it from the back end. They see all the terrible cases that went awry in terms of, you know, cases that were handled badly. And we're hoping to learn from that about what, what to do and what not to do so that we can provide proactive advice to school districts so they can manage risk effectively in a way that reduces disruption and again, reduces harm to children.
You mean in terms of insurance claims? The Visbet part?
Yes. And then the last piece that I was going to address is, as you all know, we're losing Carol and we're devastated to be losing Carol. That we probably have to give Carol a new office space if she stays. But we do.
And that would be well-deserved, by the way.
But I did want to say that we are moving forward on a plan. We just haven't had time to cross all our Ts and dot our Is, but we're hoping to have someone in place by next week so that we can have an extensive overlap period because I think it's pretty clear, talking to Carol, that the work has evolved substantially and it's time to revisit the role and think about, you know, what it is and how it should be shaped to best support the work of the board. So, we want to make sure that we have that in place to take shameless advantage of her time before she goes away.
So, when you make that decision, you'll either let me know and I can let the full board know or you can let the full board know.
Right, absolutely.
We should have notice of that before we get together for our board retreat.
And I think the hope would be to have a new person at the board retreat for the duration as well.
Yes. Although Carol will be there as well.
We think redundancy is a good thing when you have a transition.
Correct. Any other questions for Rebecca? All right, we'll move on. Jill, to the, do you want to, do the, you want Jill to start off or you want to start off with this legislative?
I'm going to let Jill, Jill has already done this once and she did a wonderful job.
Good morning. Jill Rammick from the Agency of Education. Yes, I have done this a few times now. I hope I, I hope I get it right. The short story is I think we dodged more bullets than we took. That's my take on the session. You folks should have a document that looks something like this. It's basically my attempt at a summary of the pieces that did pass and their impact on the board and the agency. And I also pulled out from each of those bills, the language that really directs work to the agency because what we're trying to do is really be proactive about taking this work on sooner rather than later and being strategic about it rather than scrambling in the fall to write reports and get things together. And a lot of the bills, even though they were relatively straightforward, the ones that did pass, do require a lot of work on our part. So, the session adjourned on Saturday, the 10th. As you folks are well aware, there were a lot of pretty big pieces of legislation that were related to education that dominated the session, but they just didn't quite end up passing. On Saturday of the adjournment, there was the possible expectation that they would suspend the rules to really quickly move through the Senate version of their, their version of a governance bill to the House and then they would have to form a conference committee and get together. And that did not happen. So, basically, what passed out of the House is a governance bill, H83, that did not get taken up by the Senate. The Senate then took the miscellaneous education bill and did their own version, which was very different, and that did not make it through. So, we're going to talk in a little while a little bit more about the governance piece because obviously that took a lot of your time and our time and attention and the legislature's attention and it made it further than we've seen it go in at least the 10 years I've been at the agency. And I think we could fully expect that to come back next year. So, we'll talk about that afterwards. But back to the pieces that did pass, I'll just quickly run through and if that's what you folks would like. H270, you might remember from last session, this is the bill that further expands pre-K and allows families to have their students participate in pre-kindergarten out of the district. The example that I would use is if you have a parent who lives in one town and works in another that's in a different district, you could conceivably bring your child with you to the town that you're working in and have them go to that pre-K instead. This also has a good deal of monitoring requirements for us and AHS. So, we definitely have a team of folks at the agency unpacking this and working on that because.
Did they include staffing for this monitoring?
No. So, we do have the Race-to-the-Top Early Learning Challenge Grant, which does have some funding for the monitoring piece, but there are a lot of other pieces in this bill that did not, that that doesn't cover, that we are hoping to at least redirect some of our resources towards. But no, there wasn't. And there was discussion about that last session about how many positions we would need, but it actually seemed like the idea of adding positions was a threat to the bill and so they did not include positions for us, but the work is there.
A comment on that, that's just setting up a very unfortunate set of. A comment on that, that's just setting up a very unfortunate set of circumstances, is that if you don't have the monitoring capability to do this stuff right, and there are people who are not running schools or preschools as they should, and that hits the media, and there's no monitoring, then there's going to be a great deal of finger pointing, et cetera.
Right.
This is just not wise governance, I don't think. But I'm sure that you folks agree on that point.
Right. And I do think that having the, the Early Learning Challenge, the federal grant, will at least beef up the monitoring piece. But there's a lot more to that monitoring. There's the analysis of that, evaluation of that in time. So yeah, that's, that's, that's a big one.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the defined as three and four-year-olds? So in other words, it says 35 weeks annually to any pre-k, pre-kindergarten children. So is it left up to the districts to?
I bet they have a definition here.
It's three and four-year-olds. It's as opposed to two-year-olds.
As opposed to four-year-olds?
It says, as of the date established by the District of Residence for kindergarten eligibility is three or four years of age, or is five years of age but has not yet enrolled in kindergarten. So apparently the district could set what the kindergarten eligibility is, and then that would determine their eligibility for pre-K.
That's the September 1st cutoff, or whatever it is. And different districts have slightly different days. That's a really good point, though, that could.
Well, I know some districts, you know, they take four-year-olds, but they, you know, I mean, there's such an abundance of three and four-year-olds that you, some districts have taken the four-year-olds first. Others do it by need. And so obviously 10 hours a week is, is not that, I mean, it's an amount, but it's certainly not a significant amount in terms of education. I'm not talking about cost.
Right. And a lot of the places, a lot of the districts have been able to use federal title funds to support pre-K. And because of this, they now wouldn't be able to do that. So the hope is that they could at least reallocate those title funds to add to the 10 hours, but they no longer can use that for the first 10 hours. So we're working to provide guidance to districts on that as well. That's a change.
Let's see. So for example, some schools will use the ed spending now to implement their 10 hours a week of preschool. And they might use some of the Title I monies to provide care beyond that.
H884 was the miscellaneous tax bill, which sets the funding parameters. It also includes a study for us at the agency to come back to the legislature on the current tuition practices and setting rates across the state. So we'll be, we'll add that to our growing list of reports we need to do every year. H85 was the big bill. So that was the?
Got a quick question on H84. The fast growth provision, you're talking about the rolling two-year average?
I missed this question.
Section 53 removes the fastest growth provision in the ADM count.
Oh, was that for the, the phantom students? Is that right?
It's, it's the phantoms on the up end.
Okay.
Not on the bottom end, I think. It's the three, it's the hold harmless on the bottom and it's the fast growth, fast growth provision. Must be.
Okay.
Bon, is that right? Yes. The, the funding formula insulates you against both rapid reductions. It holds your effective decline in enrollment to 3.5% a year. That's why Rochester currently is reimbursed for 40 more students than they have. On the up end, it also restricts the growth.
Actually, it allows you to grow faster.
Okay, okay. And that's what they're capping so that you can't increase your expenditures rapidly when you have rising enrollments.
Okay.
It forces you to control the marginal cost of addition of students.
H80, H85.
So you folks might remember, we had proposed some miscellaneous education language for inclusion in the miscellaneous education bill, updating the language to be in line with the education quality standards, providing some updated current technical education language, updating the section on educational support teams to be more in line with the best practices that we're implementing on multi-tiered systems of support. So that was H876, which was the miscellaneous education bill. And that ended up being the vehicle that the Senate had added the governance pieces to, and so ended up not passing. So we were able to get some of the pieces that we really felt strongly needed to get, needed to get through into the budget bill adjustment. One of those was a piece that allows the state to participate in a reciprocity agreement for offering online post-secondary programs. And we also, I believe I had mentioned this to you folks before, there's a group, a very small group of students, I think it's 17 this year, who are placed in Vermont awaiting adoption, but they haven't yet formally been assigned a guardianship in Vermont. And so they're not really considered state-placed because they were placed from a different jurisdiction out of Vermont. And they're not considered residents yet, so they've been in this limbo. And what it does is it makes Vermont school districts, you know, they certainly provide the education for these kids, but then they need to try to recoup some of the expenses from other state school districts. So this allows us to count those kids in that particular situation as state-placed students. So we were able to get those pieces in there. Let's see if there was any comments on H85. And then there are just a couple smaller pieces that I thought were worth noting. H217 is related to tobacco on all kinds of different levels, but one of the sections addressed tobacco on school grounds. And it kind of firms up the language around when it is permissible on school grounds. And also, I believe I sent out to you folks a bill, 497. It was, it's about the open meeting law and it clarifies the rules regarding electronic communications and teleconferencing, and also requirements for posting things like agendas and minutes on websites. If I didn't send that to you folks, I will send that to you when I sit back down. Because that seemed worth bringing up, not only for you folks, but also, of course, for districts.
Generally, how, how would that affect the open meeting, the revisions in the open meeting law affect our, our operations?
It has a few sections that really expand on when an email communication amongst members becomes a meeting and what, what that is, and how you could deal with that by warning it electronically.
It also reduces the fines.
Sorry?
It reduces the fines if you, if you are found in violation of the open meeting laws.
Jill, I know at one point they were-
I skipped a bunch, didn't I?
They were also deliberating whether the timing on your meeting deviated from the agenda as well.
Yep.
Because there have been conflicts in some districts where they've said they were going to, you know, discuss something at some point and then they didn't. And they put it someplace else and people missed the meeting.
Okay. I skipped an entire page of my update. I apologize. I knew there was more to H85.
I think we should all take a good look at the open meeting law.
Yep.
Because I, I know that, you know, that this board is very active, it communicates, and, but there are some occasions where we are in violation. So I think when Jill sends that, we need to all read it and make sure that we are abiding by it.
I've noticed that Carol has been jumping on every email telling people not to do it, and that's really helped a lot. So I think we should thank Carol for slapping hands.
But I, I think it's, the, the, this is ma-, made it a little more rigid or a little more clear anyway.
I hope so.
So.
You can always include the, the dialogue in, in the actual meeting too. I mean, as part of the record.
That's true.
I think as a practice, though, I think that the conversation shouldn't happen on a meeting, it should happen in an open meeting. I'm going to disagree, Sean, right?
I think I just would add, because I know we want to have time to, to talk further about governance, the items that I mentioned about education quality standards and so on, we do plan to bring those back next session, along with any additions that you folks in the agency develop over the next several months. Like I said, the governance consolidation, expansion of school districts conversation is expected to return. So as of right now, with no change in the legislation, Acts 153 of 2010 and 156 of 2012 remain the law of the land.
The fact that the language reflecting the changes in the education quality standards did not make it in legislation, does that have any effect on, on, on those rules and regulations?
No.
Implementation of them?
Right. It's simply titles of pieces. So it's still called school quality standards, but it's, it directs the board to establish the standards. So that doesn't change. And then it still develop, it requires the schools to develop a plan. I think in statute, it's called a continuous improvement plan, or no, that's a comprehensive action plan. And in EQS, we've changed that to the comprehensive.
So it's just updating statutes more than, than having any effect on, on the?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
And with that, maybe I'll ask you, Bon, do you mind joining me up here to talk a little bit more about?
Before we get into, I, I want to get Bill's thoughts on, on legislation. But I, I also want to make note, I think of a point Bill was making, that as we develop our legislative priorities for the next session, I think it's maybe really not board activity, but I think we need to be very supportive of some consideration for the agency budget. You know, over the last few years, this budget has been dramatically cut. And, and I think that we need to be proactive. And, and, and as, as you all know, a good hefty portion of the budget is already federally funded. But there's, I think it's going to be time for the state to step up. Now, I'm not sure the economy's going to be any better next year than it is now, but there's clearly a need here. And so I think we need to be supportive.
And it does, it will affect, I mean, I already was teasing Bill about one of his suggestions in the, in the assessment piece, that we can't jeopardize the federal funding at this point because it's so critical to the field. But it's also that it supports over north of 65% of our positions at this point. And so we are fundamentally a federal agency more than we're a state agency at this point. And that's, you know, when people ask us to respond to state-level needs, we are constricted in our capacity to do that because the federal monies cannot be used to support state agenda unless they're consistent.
We've made that point in our legislative agenda every year. And then it gets into the budget process and the governor puts in his targets for each of the agencies. And then that is disappears and is never heard from again. But it doesn't do a thing about the real problem.
Bill, do you have some comments on the legislative session, or?
Oh, what an interesting session. I think that we probably need to spend some time in the retreat talking about what positions we should take and what kind of positions we should take. I'd give you only one example is that the board did endorse the consolidation legislation, but then it didn't really have taken any action on the Senate version of things. And all of a sudden, at the last hour, that looked like that could have happened. But we really didn't have a position on that. So I think we need to rethink and take some time thoughtfully, maybe at the retreat, to say, what is it that we're going to take positions on and what are we not? Should we be taking positions on principles such as the proper funding of the agency, which you can put in a simple statement, but endorsing a particular piece of legislation when the game changed as it did in the 11th hour? Then we were not, I think that the way that the Senate was lined up was the way the Senate was lined up. That's all there was to it. But nevertheless, we need to think about flexibility and how we would do that as a board. What's the role of the secretary? Because Jill is the person there and the secretary is the person there on a daily basis. And there are lots of jinx and the maneuvering in the end game was likened to nothing I have seen before.
Well, I was there through a lot of that, and I had seen it before. It may have been a little more confusing this time.
That may be fair. It just seemed pretty, pretty close.
A little more confusing this time than it was in, in my day. But, and, and it's, you know, it's always going to be like that at the end of the session. So I don't know how a board, how a board that, you know, meets monthly is going to be able to do that. I was very careful when I was testifying before Senate Ed and, and Senate Finance that made it very clear that we had not taken a position on H876. Did I have that number right?
Yes, sir.
But that there were things in the bill that we had, I felt, taken a position on when we took our strong position on H83. So I was very careful to point those things out, the differences. But at the same time, saying that, no, we have not had a discussion on this. But there were things in, in the bill that, you know, we, we did not favor based on our discussion on H83. And I think, Bill, you're always going to be in a predicament like that at, at the end of a legislative session. So, you know, I guess, I say this with some hesitation, but one of the problems I had in this process was, once the board takes a strong position, I have some difficulty when individual board members take individual opinions before, out in the public or, or before legislative committees. And I, I think that's something we might talk about at, at the retreat. Stacy?
I was reflecting also where the, the need to be flexible and responsive also corresponds with the open meeting conversation we were just having. It'd be easy for us to, through email, say, oh, this is happening in the moment and what do people think? And obviously we can't do that. Maybe something else to talk about is, do we want, this is crazy, but do we want to schedule another meeting that's towards the end of the legislative session? I mean, we schedule our meetings and we meet monthly except for we meet twice, you know, at the end of April, beginning of May. It doesn't necessarily allow us to respond to like minute-by-minute changes. But if we want to have that active role, then maybe that's something we should be willing to, to do, to meet again.
A further thought, and this is retreat discussion too. If we're a policy board, we need to look at and carefully reflect on the pros and cons of a particular thing. It's not likely the legislative process, which has a great deal of partisan nature to it. That's just the way it is. But it's like this work session this afternoon, where we're looking at the accreditation, if you will, process and the school approval process and the assessment thing, in which we think, thought, think thoughtfully about where we should be going. And I think that's probably our best role. But that's a bigger discussion. To get into the political tumble, we're just not in that kind of capacity.
Although it was encouraging, to me anyway, on, on this, on this bill, it did not, it was not a partisan issue. It was more a geographic issue than, than partisan.
Yes, it was.
And that, that was refreshing to, to see. Margaret?
I think Bill's suggestion that we take positions on principles rather than on specific bills is helpful when you get to the end of the session and you get all those changes. Because then there's clarity about the issues we're supporting rather than are we supporting specific legislation or not. And I think that that discussion around principles would be beneficial for the board. And we may be able to reach more agreement around principles than we sometimes are around specific legislation.
Rebecca?
One of the things I'd like, like to put on the table for the board to just consider is one of the things that we noticed that we're really concerned about in the Senate version, was that there was an effort to remove a lot of the authority to the board and put it into the secretary. And we worked very hard against that. But I think that the board should be mindful of that and ask where that came from and what it signals. And that happened at the end hour. And it was very difficult to push back on. And so I think you should be mindful of that as a board.
Now, there's an example of something I testified against in Senate Finance and felt pretty comfortable that I was supporting the full board when I did that. I did not need to contact everybody. But I, I didn't realize it was difficult. I got the sense that, that it, it-
We, we spent, I think, a week working on that. Is that fair to say, Jill?
I must have shown up at the end of the week and take-
You showed up at the end.
And taking all the credit for it, huh?
You know, and, and there was so much different in what the Senate came up with in the House. You know, the House, the state board played a major role. And I think there was even a position allocated to the board to support them in this, in the House version. I mean, it was just a very different take on the entire process.
And the final Senate version was very different from the initial Senate version, which had us really concerned.
The, the bottom line was, in my opinion, the Senate had little interest in this, this legislation from the very beginning. And to demonstrate that, a couple of things. The Senate Education Committee would argue that, you know, that the House bill never arrived until very late in the session, beyond the crossover date. But if, if the Senate had any, any interest in a particular subject, they would have started hearings in advance whether they had a bill or not, historically speaking.
I think both pieces of what you said are true. It did come over late and the Senate didn't have any interest in it.
Right. And, and to further demonstrate that, I found it very interesting that, that there were- And, and to further demonstrate that, I found it very interesting that, that there were Senate Finance and maybe one other committee that was interjecting itself into the substance of a, of a particular field that normally would have been left to the Education Committee. So I, I think you look at those things, those two things and a few other things, and it was predictable and clear from the very beginning that the Senate had no interest in, in looking at the governance structure of the Vermont educational system. I fully appreciate how, how difficult this issue, issue is, particularly growing up and living in a small rural area and knowing the, the importance of what school boards think they are, have, but, you know, I, this, this issue, I think, will be for us next year, and, and this board, I, I would suggest needs to take a, a position on it once again.
Can I have one more comment?
Sure.
I, I also feel like I have to say that for the last weeks of the legislature, we had Von and Jill there pretty much full-time, Brad, Bill, and Aaron over there pretty much full-time. And these are all people who have other jobs. And so that, that really is taxing, and I, and I want to throw that out because I know that some people in this group also want some data and are, you know, to advance the discussion further in the interim. And I, I say that because the people who are doing the work, who do the analysis are the people here at this table and the others I mentioned. And so to the extent that the board can figure out what its primary purposes are and then focus on questions and be intentful and purposeful about the kinds of questions it wants to answer and the data necessary to answer that, that's really helpful to us. It allows us to approach this in a coherent way. What's very difficult, and what was difficult about the legislative session was competing contradictory requests that weren't integrated. And it's very difficult to present analysis in a coherent way under those circumstances. And so to the extent that you can be intentional about what it is you want to understand, we can be intentional in terms of how we respond and provide support for that information. Does that sort of summarize it?
Absolutely.
It's difficult to support boards and legislatures well if they're not focused.
Other questions or comments on this?
How would we attack the staffing problem and the support problem?
Well, it's, I mean, we're, in that we're no longer responsible for managing the agency, it is, you know, it wouldn't be a primary response, but I would, or primary responsibility. But I would just suggest that, you know, it's in the best interest of education, the best interest of, of our operations and the agency's operations if, if we're supportive. So I would wait for, look to the agency to make their suggestion. The agency has a whole political process to go through that we don't have to go through, i.e., you've got to get your, your budget approved by the governor. But at, at the point that, and we'll take this up later, that, you know, if the agency is indeed looking for additional funding, I think this board needs to be very supportive of it.
Yes, I would. This is something we can talk about later, but where, where would the pressure points be and who do we need to talk to at what times to be effective in making this thing happen?
Well, it, it may be delicate because, you know-
Yes.
The secretary could come to us and say, hey, I'm not getting very far, I need some help, but yet the secretary works for the governor, not for the State Board of Education anymore, so it's, it'll, you know.
There are things, though, for example, in the education quality review process, where the implications to fully implement with integrity, the policies of the board, we may need additional support in certain areas. And I think we could talk, I'll talk later about how we're trying to address that. But I think that's, that's where I'd be mindful. On the legislative side, I think of the Hazen Harassment and Bullying Task Force. I don't question that it's an incredibly important issue, but I can't help but note that that entire division was ripped out of the agency a few years ago. And the problem is, a task force that doesn't have any staffing to support it is not going to be as effective as we'd like it to be. And, and, you know, I offer that as an analogy because I think in the same way, policy that's transformative but doesn't have staff to support it is less likely to achieve the ambitions of the board as well.
If there are no other comments, I would suggest we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to Von's report. And we'll be back here at 11:15.
One big part, so I'm-
I asked Von to give us a update on where we are with various governance issues that have come before the board. And as you know, one of them is that at the June meeting, we will be taking up the Rochester School District proposal. My understanding is that the superintendents have indeed met. I think Von has a report, and that, so that'll be a, a big issue on the June agenda. So I would caution you today in getting into the details of, of that, in that representatives of, of that area are not here today. But I, I thought it would be helpful if we at least saw where, where we were in, in that process. And then Von also will give us some details on some other things that are happening in that. So with that wonderful introduction, Von.
As I distribute this letter against Dear Mr. Morse, made in May 4th, I don't know the day which it appeared in Chairman Morse's mailbox, but it was based at May 15 at the, at the agency.
Thanks.
And then this is just another handout on the districts that you would direct to have boundary studies, and in February, you made the boundary studies optional, and where they have, where they've gone. I will be very brief on the situation Windsor-Northwest since you will discuss it next week. You have the response-
Let's, let's do the general update first.
General, yes, sir.
Please.
Okay. There were five supervisor unions slash districts directed by the State Board to have boundary studies, and then in February, the February meeting, they were made optional. And they were told to tell us what they decided. I made a series of phone calls last week, some of them had. Essex-Caledonia did respond that they had opted out of the boundary study quite promptly. Orange East had a very good reason for, excuse the typo, not replying. Have to keep remembering, spreadsheets don't have spell checks automatically. They wanted to look at what happened in the legislature, and they wanted to think about where to go at that point. So they will be having that discussion and letting us know. In Washington South, the superintendent informed us that the board, the study had been suspended, and she expected a formal motion at the SU Board's next meeting. And again, I suspect that there will be a discussion of legislative activity interwoven with that discussion as well. In Wyndham-Southwest, Superintendent McLemmons informed the agency that the SU had suspended the boundary study. And Winuski, days before your decision, submitted a report recommending against merger. They did, however, detail plans for coordinating activities, particularly with Burlington. Certainly, those two districts are, if not the most culturally diverse, among the most culturally diverse and bordering each other. There seems to be a possibility of, of some significant collaborations. They're also looking at the food services, and I'm sure some other things as well. So they've started a fruitful discussion, and they're not interested in the boundary change, but they're interested in other kinds of, of cooperation. Would you like the update on the other SUs that have been active now, and then we'll move to, to this?
Wyndham Central?
Wyndham Central is one of-
Just to re, want you to remind the board what, what happened with that?
Wyndham, that was exactly part of my next three.
Oh, pardon me.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, I didn't write them down because this was the five.
Okay.
Wyndham Central is still active. You, I believe in November, approved their report. As we added up the numbers, it turned out that they had not allowed enough days for possible petition to reconsider, and they had been approved. They were going to get back, you know, do the counting, get back, and they, they weren't going to meet the original vote date they'd hoped for, and they were going to work out new dates. I imagine Carol would have put it on, the consent agenda. While they were in the process of doing that, the legislative discussion about governance, the nature of it, began to become public, and they felt an obligation to delay things until they saw the results of that discussion. They're going to meet in May. I don't know whether in May they'll be able to simply go forward or whether they'll think that they need to study more. But at some point, they, they will get back to you. They are in a peculiar state where you've approved their report, which, in the agency's view, means if they were to do anything else, they would need your permission to withdraw or suspend the report. I have no reason to believe they're doing that. This was literally, we think it's prudent to see what's happening.
So you'll follow up on, on that before our next meeting, then?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chittenden East is very actively involved, moving forward, studying a modified unified union school district. You may recall, they had a regional education district vote, which passed four of the six districts, lost narrowly in Richmond and overwhelmingly in Huntington. In the, in a modified unified union with four affirmative districts, they would be able to form a modified unified union. The other two would stay in the union for the grades it now operates, beginning with grade five, and any one, and then they would continue to operate their own local districts.
Does that mean you would end up with another superintendent?
You, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear enough. Instead of having one superintendent inside a red, you would still need a supervisor union office outside of the mud and the one or possibly two other districts. You'd have a superintendent for Chittenden East, and the superintendent would be the executive officer of the modified unified union school district and any districts, less than a majority of elementary districts that chose to be-
So the simple answer is yes. They would have another superintendent. They would need another superintendent office.
They would keep the superintendent office they have now. It wouldn't be another. The modified unified union district is not going to have a superintendent other than the one that is there, and that will be the same superintendent for any elementary districts that choose not to be part of the modified unified union.
Okay.
Another way to explain it is the votes, in terms of how many votes you take. That's another way.
Right. Basically, the way it would need to be done, because the districts that maintain their local control over, in this case, pre-K four, their budgets need to be voted. There needs to be an elementary budget voted for the modified unified union they don't participate in, and then there needs to be a five-through-twelve vote that everybody currently in the union participates in. And then above that, there's one superintendent for all of them.
What, what about the representation to the union?
That's a wonderful question. And-
That's the three-three-three number.
Mr. James and I suggested that that should be defined to the Education Committee at the time. The amendment was proposed fairly late, and the, the fact it was people from Chittenden East who were most interested in the amendment, and they assured the committee that this was precisely the sort of decision that the study committee could make for itself. So it is still going to have to meet the standard of one person, one vote, but in terms of being able to give you a structure, I can't because there isn't one. I suspect when they realize what they need to do to get accurate tax rates and things like that, once it's been done, there's going to be a fairly substantial one, and it will absolutely have to be in compliance with the one-person vote.
Rebecca?
But I think the question was, would the representation of the union districts outvote the two small towns?
Well, I don't know what it would look like, but obviously with the modified district, you, you have one board.
Yes.
And then what would be the representation from that to the union district, or to, to the SU?
On the unified board.
I mean, so what you're saying is, they'll take the modified district, figure out the one-person-one-vote calculation relative to the others, and, and then it gets to what you're talking about, in the sense that in the SU, they're going to be overwhelming.
In, in the SU, it's exactly the opposite.
Yeah, they'll have the underrepresented.
And what-
The SU, it won't be represented. You'd like the Senate, right?
What was happening in, didn't come to pass because the Reds didn't pass, but the plan had been, in those cases, to petition the board so that representation on the, the larger unit would still be fairly represented. It wouldn't be three for a modified unified union that operated multiple schools, and then three each for one or possibly two small districts. But that, for that, they would need to come to the board for a waiver, and we expect them to do that.
Okay.
And you, they would come with a recommendation, and you would evaluate the recommendation. So that is moving forward.
Said there was one more?
I am very sad to tell you that until last night, there was one more, in that Orleans-Southwest voted not to go forward with a consolidation vote. They'd invited me there, they were struggling. They're in a specially complicated district. If they had a non-operating district, they'd have every permutation possible. The structural stumbling block was, in addition to a secondary union, seven through twelve, they had an elementary middle union, Lakeview, and it had Greensboro and Standard. Greensboro belonging to Hazen Union, Standard having choice. Standard was, by the end, clearly determined that it did not want a change in the status quo by statute. It requires the consent of both parties to dissolve a union. Reason I'd been invited, I'd worked with their attorney, Chris Leopold, in what we thought might work as a way of allowing Greensboro to affirm its interest in the modified unified union and then continuing it just grade seven and still stay. It was very complicated, and they recognized it as such, but that's why I was there. Again, the, if I can reel out a, a moment of, of personal privilege, I've always talked when they decided not to vote or they had a vote and it failed usually one or sometimes two districts. This is the first time I'd ever been in the room, and coward that I am, I tried to get out assuring them that they wanted to privately talk about these final, final discussion before the vote, and every voice yelled no at the same time. I don't know if they wanted to torture me or if it was an expression of trust, but I knew how it was going to go as they walked in the room. These people had been working for three years. They were in utter pain. I'd gotten the frustration the other times. This time, the waves of, of pain truly came through. I mean, here were people who'd worked very, very hard. They were absolutely convinced that they had something that was going to benefit their communities. Superintendent Canning had talked about the inequities among a number of the local districts. I won't mention the names here, but that clearly some of them were able to offer significantly more opportunities than others, and this would be a way to rectify that. And on the one hand, they still believed that the reasons were there. On the other, they'd been banging their head against the wall for, for three years. And so primarily, and- And so primarily, and typically everywhere, the impediment has been incorporating choice districts into a larger reform effort. We've seen that happen again and again. It was actually the biggest problem by far in H883, and they ultimately guaranteed that no choice district would lose any of its choice. It's actually a level of commitment they've never made to any district operating anything else, but it was there. They took their, well, I guess it was technically a vote, I think it's much more fair to say that it was consensus. I tried to offer a little bit of encouragement that every case I knew of, these studies produced inner cooperation from cross-pollination, and that people looked upon them as having a positive impact. And Superintendent Canning went through a list of things that had already emerged from their study. And I'm happy to tell you that the special education at the SU level is so efficient that they're returning money to their districts. But the bottom line was that they were convinced, and I suspect rightly convinced, that they would not meet the requirements for unanimity for vote, and they will be writing a report, and it will be submitted.
Okay. Two things before you get into your other report. When, in February, I guess, when we agreed to support the Secretary and not pursue some of the boundary studies, was that set to a time based on the pending legislation, or was that a final decision?
You've made, my recollection is you made it optional for them. They are not required to do anything.
All right.
Which actually extends, it removes the deadlines and allows them more time to-
Okay.
-to pursue options.
All right. This is maybe an unfair question, and maybe more to set up a conversation for the June meeting. If this Board was to, I'm only speaking for myself, obviously, if this Board was to pursue governance in the next few months, are there, and given an existing statute, are there ways that this Board could look at that issue?
The largest, my sense is, this Board has been as flexible on waivers, on the use of its authority as it can be under present law. It's hard for me to imagine anything else that you could do, and I have given it thought.
Well, I think one thing, one thing is the criteria by which districts are asked to consider this. I mean, right now, when a Superintendent retires-
Oh.
-this conversation begins. So I think that there, it could be, for example, there's a district in the south of the state that's had six superintendents or something like that in five years. There are districts that are really struggling, and it could be that we came up with a different set of criteria that would trigger a review.
Well, what I, the way I would ask, leave this, then, is if the Agency has some suggestions for this Board to consider over the next few months, knowing that there's probably going to be further legislation, I would invite you to bring that back to us at the June meeting.
We can do that, sir.
Okay. Now on to your last topic.
The last one will be very brief. The information is in front of you. It was a product of a group of superintendents. Superintendent Plujoschuk fell unable to sign because his supervisory union board is against the dissolution, the dispersal of the districts. Basically, Pittsford goes to Windsor Central in their proposal. They'd already been engaged in discussions before this started. In fact, Pittsford was frustrated that the larger discussion delayed its hopes to move to Windsor Central. All other five in this, or all the other districts in this letter are recommended to go to the Orange-Windsor Supervisory Union. And the only thing not in the-
It's the one we were doing last time.
...letter itself, which is, I think now, public knowledge, is that Superintendent Bickford, who generously accepted the districts, retires June 30th. As the Chair pointed out, the discussion part of this should occur next week in a sworn meeting with the Parties' President. If there's anything-
So is it, does this, is this, I mean, I, again, I need to look at the geography and look at, is this a solution, or is this still up in the air?
Clearly, this is a statement of a position rather than a report. There's no evidence of the analysis that went into it, except that the allocation of choice districts corresponds with where the largest number of their students went. The information they had from Mr. Andrews' report would have given them a fairly good approximation of how money would flow. And I know they've thought about issues such as the closing out of the Windsor-Northwest Supervisory Union, so I know that these few pages are not representative of the range of their discussions. But this obviously is not another equivalent, or approximation even, of the studies that the Board typically gets when it makes these decisions. We'll obviously provide maps, and can give a bit more detail on the finances that's not in here that we'll be able to know. Ultimately, whether that's adequate or not is a decision of the Board.
Any other, yes, Margaret?
The other thing, we do have, we do have some internal numbers on allocation of title money that we would present at the next meeting as well.
Yes, and that will be included in the-
Because the realignment will shape who is eligible for some of that.